Okay, this is a town of Andover, a special town meeting for Thursday, August 1st. The electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings at the town of Andover. Over are hereby notified that a special town meeting will be held in the town office building community room. And our first order of business is to choose a moderator for said meeting. Any nominations?
Nominate Wally.
Nominate Wally. Do we have a second nominee, Wally? Second over there, Bob Hamburger. Alright, so it's Don Deadley nominated. All those in favor? Any? Wally, on your side.
I have a number two, to see if the town will approve the receipt of a grant of eighty three thousand dollars for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Part of energy and environmental protection, recreational trails program requiring a town match of twenty one thousand dollars from the town multi-use building fund to fund the design of a pathway between the municipal complex and the Hop River Trail through town-owned land. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Eric Anderson with the presentation on.
Alright folks, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so what do you mean? Jeff says I have four minutes to do this, so I'll go quickly, but probably take more than four. Okay, so our chart requires us to go to special meeting anytime we as a town accept a grant that's, the grant is more than twenty five hundred dollars and there's any town contribution, even public works doing a little work, work. It has to go to town meeting, so that's what we're here for. So, I applied for a D E P rep trails grant this spring. The goal of this was to design an improved Percy Cook Trail. So, we, as many of you know, last year we got a legislative appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars to figure out where the trails should go and how it should work here. So, out of that came a desire for two pathways. One going down Route 316 and connecting to the rail trail, and a second one going through town property, which combined make about a two mile loop. So, we tried to fund both of them with different mechanisms. We went through a program called Lotzip to fund the pathway down Route 316. We did get a two point nine million dollar Lotzip grant for the construction of that, and that is in final design right now. In fact, you might have seen the guys surveying on Route 316. Still going to be a few years out, still a lot more outreach to the homeowners that needs to happen. Finalized design, worked with D O T, back to the homeowners. So, it's not happening instantaneously. The second half of this was a pathway that runs back through town property and also connects through the trail. So, we applied to D E P for the design funding. And the reason I did that was in, in the last four or five funding segments, D E P has been much more likely to fund the design studies than a year or two later fund construction. So, that's the route we took with that. This is the fourth time I've applied to this program for funding and the first time we got it. So, D E P has committed eighty three thousand five hundred dollars for the design. The town matches twenty one thousand, which will come from the multi-use building fund. So, it won't be additional taxation, it's money we've already put away, you know, for construction projects. So, this is just kind of a summary of that for the Percy Cook Trail. The study, we completed the initial study using a hundred percent legislative grant funding. Now we have the design permitting, you know, and so we're funding that eighty percent with state rep trails grant and twenty percent from the town. We're looking to get the study going sometime middle to end of August. We've already gone to R F P for the contractor, that's for the engineering firm that's doing the design for both this part and this part. So, we don't need to re-go out to R F P. And the location is the area between here and the Hop River Trail. I'll show you mapping in a second. So, here's a breakdown of the cost estimate. The top part is everything we're doing now. So, the bottom half is just a real, you know, what over-the-world estimate for the actual construction. So, this would be, if it ever got actually built, would be somewhere around a million dollar budget. And obviously, we're not going to do that unless we have that funding. So, this is the overall plan, coming zoom in on that. This is what we're talking about. So, here, we're in the lower corner where it says community center. And the red line is the existing outline of the Percy Cook Trail, which follows the old logging trail for the last time that property got logged. The problem is, if you see all those little lines up there, that's really steep contour. So, the town hall is about three hundred eighty feet in elevation. It rises up to about four hundred and ninety feet, and then it drops back down to about three hundred and thirty feet. So, there's a lot of up and a lot of down there. So, the hard part has been coming up with the design, which gets down below the ten percent grade level, so that it's actually walkable and bikeable. And, you know, it meets current. You know, so we done an initial look at this using lidar data and the existing mapings that the town has. And the next stage is to go back there and to survey it, you know, do core samples in the earth, so you know what you're looking at, and design the actual pathway. So, that's what this grant is designed to do, is get us up to a final design, how they make that route go through. And if we go back one slide, you can see in green, that is roughly the path that will be taken by the second trail that will run down Route 316. So, you can see from where we are here, that gives you roughly a two foot, two mile loop trail from this location, where you don't have to worry about cars, other than a little bit on Cider Mill Road. So, that is basically what we're applying to do. And obviously, it takes a town meeting to approve that funding. So, at this point, I know I went through that pretty quick, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
This is putting up against the school property. What is this, right at the top of our trail?
So, the top of the trail will run rough, it will stay on, it will stay off the parcel that's quote-unquote "school property," but it will run fairly close to it, yes.
So, is there any consent, well, what does the school board say about this?
I haven't asked.
So, the Percy, the Percy Cook is the one that goes off the backside of this school? It's not the one that goes down 316, you're on the connect?
Correct. Correct. The Percy Cook is the one that goes back through.
Which color is it?
So, it's the red going to the purple. The purple is the revised, the red is the existing trail, the purple is what you have to do if you want to make grade and make it something that's, you know, walkable. If any of you walked up that from the rail trail, you'll notice that's an extremely tough walk to make, and impossible on a bike of any sort.
George, the question here is, will this design study include what I call a cost benefit analysis? You were talking about a project on order one mil, and I'd like to have some estimates about how many users on a daily, monthly, seasonal basis. And I would hope that that would be part of the design process, to get that information as part of the public outreach. Second question is, what provision for public input in the design process is envisioned?
So, one of the things that is an absolute requirement for D E P funding is public engagement. So, there will be multiple meetings on this and a public hearing on this prior to coming up with a final design. Done?
Yeah, done. Let me extract that. So, the red, is that currently a trail, or is that just a proposed trail?
Well, it's.
A wooded in?
It's a trail that we keep walkable, okay? And it's, it's marginally marked, countable until you get to the steep section down. It's not really ridable from, you know, the last third of a mile, basically, is, is not really ridable. It's marginally walkable, but not ridable in its current state. It was the old logging road for when they logged this property.
So, that's there now, so it would be, the hundred thousand dollars goes to fund the design funding, the purple area, or the?
Well, but there's also, if you see the light blue, those are, those are areas that are wetlands, so there's going to have to be some provision. When you're logging a road, you can be less sensitive to wetlands than you have to be if you're putting a permanent trail. So, there's a bunch of design in the other spots, and there will also be a fair bit of design when we get up into this area. Because part of the, the issue we ran into is we developed a secondary path to get to the Percy Cook Trail from here, so we can prevent people from having to cross school property when the Percy Cook Trail was originally developed, which is going back maybe eight or nine years. And one of the issues that we had with that is that this section, especially in years like this, is extremely wet. So, even though we have permission from the gas line to cross in a secondary spot, that would, this part here would need to be improved too, because there is some, some definite wetlands crossings and wetlands impacts there. So, that's a big part of the, there's a fairly big wetlands design component to this, to the design parts.
So, you're saying the project itself, if it ever came off the ground, would the owner hold it out?
If we paved the whole thing, yes. But, you know, any one mile paving project these days is, you know, sure.
So, you said nine hundred and fifty thousand may be required for construction, is the current estimate?
Yeah.
Was that the Bay View? So, you said maybe about two years from now, we might be able to apply for grant money, is that right?
Sure.
And is that going to also require about a twenty, twenty-five percent contribution from the town?
So, it depends. I mean, my goal would be another Lotzip grant. Part of the reason why I've done it this way is, and the reason why we went after a legislative grant in the first place, is it's often harder to get design money than it is to get actual construction money. Once you've got essentially what they call a shovel running project, where you have an engineering design that, you know, the, especially the D O T has blessed, it is easier then to actually fund the construction. So, which is exactly what we did in 316. We went after congressional or legislative money first, used the legislative money for a study in preliminary design, went, applied to Lotzip, got the Lotzip funding in the first go-around, which was pretty cool. And so, that project, you know, the town may have twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars of skin in the game by the time we develop it, but the state will have about three million. So, we funded almost the whole cost of this. My goal is to do the same thing with this, but I can't guarantee it. And obviously, if I'm standing up here in a couple of years asking you for two hundred thousand dollars, that's a much bigger ask for the town, and I recognize that.
Will Lotzip fund something up to that amount here?
Yeah. The only, my only hesitation with Lotzip is that, right now, the pipeline for Lotzip funding is filled, I have at least another five or six years. So, I don't know when they're going to have another Lotzip grant funding round available to us. So, that's kind of where I'm going with it.
I realize it hasn't been entirely designed, carry across from, uh, a year ago. Hasn't been entirely designed, but what's the widthier visioning, you know, like, two people walking abreast?
Yeah, this will likely be a ten foot, I mean, kind of the, the D O T, federal D O T standard for multi, multi-use paths, is a ten foot wide path.
And the cabin?
So, you get it?
And you're planning on paving the cabin or something?
So, the steep part will absolutely be paved, the rest of it could be stone dust and it could be paved. It's going to kind of depend on what people want. I don't have any great, I like riding gravel, so I'd be just as happy making it stone dust. But there is more erosion, you know, maintenance costs are slightly higher with gravel than with paving.
Hi, Doris Montalvo, 33 Cider Mill Road. As a person born with disabilities, and it's going to be crossing in front of my house and my children's house, I'm concerned about the three foot that you mentioned, that's, that's up the code with the state and guideline, but for a wheelchair accessibility, for accessibility walking, it's a hazardous trail as it is right now. I can't even leave my driveway, because on Cider Mill Road, people just rip, zip right there like, right now as it is. So, there are no stops on the road to prevent, to slow down. So, with this trail and it not being well paved, how are, is the town going to make sure, sure that it's not hazardous, that it's accessible to all of us, and that it's, it's a safe, a safe place to, to walk or ride or have a wheelchair accessibility?
So, first of all, it will be, unlike Cider Mill Road, it will be one hundred percent non-motorized traffic. So, so, you know, you won't have to worry about the automobile component. So, the upper part, apart from the community center, up past where it says views, and it starts to go into the switchback, that you can make a really mild grade. So, you know, if you chose to pave it, that whole section can be fully ADA compliant. Where we get into the steep section, just simply because, you know, you have a hundred and fifty feet of elevation gain, and you have it in about a third of a mile, no set of switchbacks will make that fully ADA accessible. And because there's no road there, you can't apply pro-AC. So, the majority of this will be ADA accessible, but I, I'm not saying the whole thing will, sorry. The, the end part where it starts going down the steep part will not be. I wish we could figure out how to design it so that it would be, well, we just, we don't own enough land there and enough way to make switchbacks to bring the grade down. Ben?
Mars Castedella, 389 Mill Road. Why do we need this? Do we know how many people think they want to use this? I mean, if you go off to the trail anywhere, there's parking lots, they've developed all the way along the way, why do we think we need it from a community center to use this half?
So, my answer to that is twofold. First, that was something that was identified in the last plan of conservation and development. That was one of the goals, which was linkage from this, the municipal complex, to the rail trail, and then on to the ball fields down below. So, that's one component. And the second thing is, I think, in this day and age, anything you can do to promote healthy activity in walking and biking is worthwhile for a community. And if you look at where the youngest generation of people are moving to, you know, there's a, there is a, a large movement of people towards areas that are walkable and bikeable. And if we're going to attract people, we're going to attract young families, that's got to be part of the mix that we do as a town.
But we really don't want to attract people because of taxes most of the time, and the school says so. And it's going to cost a hundred thousand now, and maybe up to a million by the time we build it. All the.
Yeah. All public works projects are expensive. There's nothing you're doing today that's inexpensive.
So, the red trail that we're looking at tonight, with the paint attached to it, that goes down to the rail trail, picking it up near the museum?
Uh, no. The museum is closer to where the green trail intercepts. In fact, the green trail intercepts, the green pathway intercepts fairly close to where the museum is.
Okay. And is that green trail the second phase of this? Like, tonight we're here for eighty three thousand, approval of this is the twenty one because of the red trail?
So, correct. There, both of those trails, both of those pathways are proceeding down different funding. There are different stages, and there are different funding, but both of those grants were gotten. We proposed in both cases doing the opposite one to make it a loop. So, we wrote that into both grants, that one of the objectives of this was to make a loop.
What is the yellow, the yellow?
The yellow is the existing Hop River State, State Park.
Okay.
Yeah, State Park.
The existing rail trail.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I also wonder if we really need this. We have lots of white trails already, we've seen them. This is a potential boondoggle of money, and we're going to be seeing in the next couple of years in this town, with the increase in the border bed budget, the school attendance. Twenty thousand, it's not that much, but two hundred thousand would be. This is a, is the step in, in that direction, so I'm, I'm not sure we really need this.
Sure.
Scott Spade, 168 Cider Mill Road. The money you said is going to come from, because the building fund?
Correct.
I am assuming that what we talked about here and there, I'm building, you know, that we're going to add kids to that as soon as we are clear to do it, which means, you know, past a certain threshold after it's occupied and whatever, but is that going to cut into that?
Uh, it is not. That's part of the reason, well, this is one of the reasons why we've been funding the multi-use building fund on an ongoing basis. We did put fifty thousand dollars into that in this budget cycle, so we have enough to cover that. The other thing we can keep in mind is that we currently have a congressional request for funding that made it through the Senate Appropriations Commission, as it two days ago. That will go a long way towards funding the second phase of what we're doing with the community center. So, what I'm trying to do is finish the community center and the generator for the, for the three-building complex out of mostly federal funds. So, I'm actually not using a lot of the multi-use building fund for that. No guarantees I'm going to get it, still got to go through, but, you know, it made it out of the, the state funding mechanism, and it made it through the Senate Appropriations Committee, so I think it has a reasonable chance of being funded. Sure.
I just have a quick one. Is there a list that we can look at anywhere that has a list of outstanding projects and their cost? So, at least we know, people are saying, well, this could be, we, we know what we're looking at future for costs and?
I mean, I have a list, I have not published that list, but no reason we can.
Okay.
Nothing secret, that's for sure.
Bob Hamburger, Shoddy Mill Road. I just want to point out that as a town, we really have three town centers. We have the municipal town center here, we have the historic town center, which is where the railroad station was on Center Street, and we have the athletic town center over where the fields are. And we have very little to connect them, so that somebody can walk or ride in between. So, from my perspective, anything that we can do to integrate this town, so that those town centers can be easily traversed by somebody on a bike of foot, is a good idea.
Sure.
Jeff Ballard, Lake Road. When do you expect to have a certificate of occupancy on the seniors' community center?
Uh, last week.
Last week? Now, once you get that certificate of occupancy, doesn't that close the door on million-dollar budget now?
No. It's still part of the, I mean, the punch list and the final fees to the contractor are all fitting under that.
If, if we don't mind, can we keep it to the issues related to this grant and this application, because that's what we're here for initially in this town meeting?
Yeah, my point being is that after a period of time, when that million-dollar obligation is done, maybe the twenty one thousand dollars that the town is putting into this will be better spent on the senior center, community center. That's my opinion.
Okay? Sure.
I just want to remind everybody that there was recently a death on Route 316, a guy was on a motorcycle. And so, as someone who rides bicycle, would love to utilize these trails, I think it's a win-win. I mean, I applaud Eric for doing this work and getting this grant and moving our town forward, like all the other towns are getting, you know, red trails that go through the town, so that they can go to different areas.
That was a he, right?
Sorry?
That was a he, not a you.
Yes, John 316. And our roads, you know, when you try to go down Lake Road, which would, would, you could avoid it if you had that trail. A lot of times, we try to go down Lake Road, it's a Dollar General down there, and that's a danger, so.
Are you looking for a motion?
Please.
Yeah, I don't think I have to consider a motion.
You can make a motion to vote on this.
Okay, well, I think that we go on as proposing.
Okay.
Who's second to that?
Captain.
Second. Captain Wally is.
Okay. Motion to the maine second. You came in to check in, you were given a paper ballot, the yes, no, it's false. If you guard the ballot, they'll come around with ballot logs, they'll pick up the ballots. The candidate, the candidate, the ballot, they're gone.
Any more ballots?
Sure.